Who will our next generation be? What will they achieve? At Proctor Public Schools, we create an environment to educate, engage, and inspire our students. To seek adventure, gain knowledge, and make a difference. Proctor Public Schools. We see greatness in our students and great things for their future. We educate, engage, and inspire.
Boys went overtime and they, I think, stayed tight.
Yep.
All right. We'll call to order the regular school board meeting of September 26, 2022. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. If everyone would stand, the flag is right back here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our, in the equal and equitable justice for all.
All right. To begin our meeting tonight, we are going to have our student's school board liaison members take an oath of office. I'd like to call Britta Bergland, Eden Gisbulb, and Abigail Shunk up in front of me here, and we'll take an oath of office. All right, ladies. Huh? I was saying, should we just, you want me to come out this way? Okay. I also want to do that. All right. So you'll repeat after me. I, reading, swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of Student School Board Liaison, of Independent Schools with 704, Professor, my Dr. Neil. Thank you. Good work. We have one more member that will take an oath of office the next meeting she was unable to attend, and that is Brooklyn Birch. We'll go ahead and move forward with the meeting with roll call. McDonald, here. Parr Mader.
Here.
Peterson. Oh, and I just lost it. One second, sorry. Pokarnich, here. Pogornik.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Thank you. Do you want to move forward? Do we have a spot for student's school board liaison? Oh, yeah, sorry. Yep, okay. Britta.
Here.
Brooklyn. Eden.
Here.
And Abigail.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is an approval of the agenda as presented in your packet. I would like to make one change. I would like to strike item 11E and otherwise the agenda as presented in your packet. Looking for a motion? Thank you, Larry. Is there a second?
Second, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions regarding the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries. Item number six is an approval of the minutes of the regular school board meeting from September 12, 2022. Looking for a motion?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Yeah, I can second it. Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Does anyone have any questions regarding the minutes in the packet? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And that motion carries. Moving on to the finance report. This approval will approve the payment of bills dated September 26, 2022, in the amount of $362,923.49, covering checks 114030 through 114193. Looking for a motion?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy. Is there a second?
No.
Thank you, Larry. Does anyone have any questions regarding the finance report tonight?
Yes. We'd like to pull check 114092 for $6,149 from the approval. It's for HumanWare USA.
Okay.
If you would consider making that as an amendment or friendly amendment.
Sure. Amy, would you be in favor of making that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Larry, is a second? Do you agree?
Perfect.
All right. So still on the finance report with that change there. Any other questions regarding the finance report tonight? I asked Steve my questions earlier this weekend. Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And that motion carries. We'll move on then to commendations and congratulations. The board would like to thank all the volunteers, community members, and students who helped in the completion of the playground for everybody. A special thank you to Jennifer McDonald for initiating this wonderful project. I'd like to also personally extend my thanks and gratitude to the community as well. Are there any other commendations or congratulations that we should consider tonight? Okay. Moving on then to public comment. The school board meeting is a business meeting of the school district that occurs in the public. It is not a public forum. The public comment portion of our meeting is a time where we offer an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. Once we move from this portion of our meeting, members of the public will no longer be allowed to address the board. As a general rule, the board will listen to members of the public but will not comment on or respond to any comments made by speakers. The board will not engage in dialogue, though any board member may ask questions. Please do not include the names of Proctor Public School employees or students, their title or building location in your remarks for your own legal protection and the legal rights of our students and staff. Issues related to school district employees can be made in writing and can be directed to the Human Resources Department at Proctor Public Schools. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Speakers may not roll their time to another speaker. Please begin your presentation by stating your name, including the spelling, and who you represent if applicable. In the spirit of fairness to all participants, the board requests that you respect this format. Thank you for taking the time today to attend this meeting and to share your concerns. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that would like to address the board? Okay. We will move on then to consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move Joe.
There's a motion by Joe. Is there a second?
Yeah, I can second it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Does anyone have any questions regarding the consent agenda tonight? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And that motion carries. Next up is items for individual action. Item 11A, approve the student and parent handbook for Pike Lake Elementary for the 2022 through 2023 school year. Looking for a motion?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy. Is there a second?
I can second that, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. Does anyone have any questions regarding the handbook? Nope. Thank you for getting those changes done earlier, Mr. Gentanen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11B, approve a recommendation from Superintendent Gentanen and Business Manager Steve Anderson to certify the proposed initial 2022 payable 2023 levy at the maximum. The truth and taxation meeting will be December 12, 2022, at 7:00 PM during the regular school board meeting. We're looking for a motion?
I'll make it, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a second?
Second by Amy.
Thank you, Amy. I'll defer to Steve for a brief overview.
Sitting in front of you, and I think all of our audience members have it as well as this landscape sheet. And really what you want to look at is the middle of the page, and there's one number on there that's pretty important to you, and that's, if we certify at the max, or if the board certifies at the max, our levy will go down by 1.23%. This is a $5,300,000 levy, which makes up about sixteen, between 16 and 17% of our annual budget. And to have it go down this year is certainly a pleasure. Congratulations to all of you. And I apologize for not getting this to you earlier. We had some technical problems with MDE, and they, we've been working on them for several days, and they worked them out about four o'clock this afternoon. So I printed this out just before five. So it is complete.
Well.
Can I respond to any questions? I'm having to touch base on one other piece of this. If you look at this, and especially as we continue to look at this, you're going to see that our OPEP debt service levy went down by $1,930,000. That's because we paid off in 2000, with the 2022 levy. So what you're going to see on the tax forms is the BODER approved levy is going to go up by $1,025,000. And people should ask, what did we approve to have this levy go up dramatically? And they haven't approved anything additional. It's the way we financed it to try and balance our levy. It's just a financing piece to keep the levy flat. So it looks a little bit unusual. It's not. But if people look at one only line item, it's going to be different. And feel free to have them call the superintendent's office or my office, and I'm more than happy to work through it with them.
Great. Any other questions regarding the levy? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11C, approve the first reading of suggested district policy changes. Policy 513, student promotion, retention, and program design. Policy 523, policies incorporated by reference. Policy 607, organization of grade levels. Addendum 607.1, early entrance to kindergarten. Policy 615, testing accommodations, modifications, and exemptions for IEPs. Section 504 plans and LEP students. Policy 720, vending machines, and also Policy 722 form. Policy 730, purchasing. Policy 801, equal access to school facilities. Policy 801 form. Policy 802, disposition of obsolete equipment and material. Policy 806, crisis management. Policy 807, health and safety. Policy 901, community education. Policy 902, use of school district facilities and equipment. Policy 902.1, regulation and fee structures for use of school district facilities and equipment. And Policy 904, distribution of materials on school district property by non-school persons. Looking for a most approved of these policies.
Yeah, I can do it, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Joe.
Joe can have it.
I heard Joe. Thank you. Any questions regarding any of these policies? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? And that motion carries. Item 11D, approve and adopt the second reading of suggested district policy changes. These policies were included in your September 12 board packet. They include Policy 417, chemical use and abuse, and Policy 418, drug-free workplace, drug-free school and form. Looking for a motion?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. Does anyone have any questions regarding the second reading of these policies? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to items for discussion and information, we'll start with the superintendent update from Superintendent Gentanen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, before I begin with my comments, excuse me, I would like to acknowledge Nancy Littman. Nancy's been with the district for an exceedingly long time in many roles in the administrative realm, and I just wanted to make sure that we took this opportunity to applaud her and her efforts on our behalf and our students' behalf. She'll be retiring on Friday. Her last day, obviously, is October 1st, but we just want to thank her publicly for everything that she has done for us. It's been, and I personally have learned a lot from her about the early learning section of what we do with our community education. So I just want to thank Nancy Littman for everything that she has done for us. Probably should have said this during commendations and congratulations, but I think this is an appropriate time as well. So, and then the other thing is, I would like to also congratulate Mr. Hughes for getting those changes done to the Pike Lake handbook. It was him and his team that worked very hard to make sure that those were ready for you. So congratulations to Mr. Hughes. Just a few quick things here. One of the things that we have to do as a school district is disclose the sites that we use that may contain identifying information of their children, and that we've been working on this since the summertime, and we're getting close to a letter that's going to be able to be put on our website so that they'll be able to see that. This has to be done on or before October 7th. So you'll see that on the website. And then the discussion of the many platforms we're using, one of the things that happens in a school district is teachers run across things that they may think will work really well in their classroom, and we start putting way too many of those things into our system. And every single one of those has with it student information. So what we're going to be working on is getting rid of some, talking to the teachers who've been using them, making sure that they're no longer needed or used, because it's going to make our job and our data more secure if we can get rid of some of those platforms. So that's coming in the future of board report. Just some classroom observations. Everywhere I go, I just see just teachers just doing what they do, and they're so excited to share with me what it is that they're doing. I stopped in at a third grade class, and Mrs. Hegemeyer was talking about the, you know, when you're in math, you get beyond millions, billions, trillions, and they were talking about quadrillions, and they keep going quintillions, yep, sextillions, septillions. And then I said, you really know what non-nillions are? And they do. Third graders. And I was just like, wow. Okay, I didn't know that, and well, I may still not know that, to be honest. But just a terrific experience in her class. And I am going to go out there again and share something with them with a science experiment. We'll bring the other third grade class in, so we do it all at once. And my hope is that when this starts getting out there, it's like, well, if you're going to do that there, come here and do that here. That's my hope and my goal, to get to classrooms like that. I got to spend a little bit of time in the welding class with Mr. Bloom, and I said, "Mr. Bloom, can I just come hang out with you guys? Because I do not know how to weld. It's something that I really want to learn to do." And they're, "Absolutely. The kids are going to teach you how to weld." Not Mr. Bloom, but the students. And then two other things. Real fun story. I was, it was late in the day on Friday, and we were short 25 teachers and paraprofessionals. And I said, "I'll take a class." So I went and subbed in an eighth grade math classroom, and I'm here to tell you, it's fun to be in a classroom again. It really is. I haven't been in a classroom for a long time, and, you know, the enthusiasm, and let's face it, they're eighth graders. And you all remember what it was like to be in eighth grade. I know you do. So my observation there was, it's still the same. They're just terrific, and it was really a fun experience. And then lastly, I was walking in the hallway, and one of the kids said, "Hey, Mr. Gentanen, were you at the Buffalo House for dinner with your wife on Thursday?" And I said, "Yes, I was. Were you there? I thought he was sitting at a table next to us." And he said, "No, I actually cooked your meal." I said, "What?" And he said, "Yeah, I'm a cook there." And it was delicious. It was called Doc Holiday. So I highly recommend that Lucas cooks your Doc Holiday for you. It was just fantastic. My discussion with John Osmond about the standards, alignment of standards in curriculum is very similar to what Judy was talking about tonight in the curriculum committee meeting tonight, and I'll share some more with you later in the week. But we do have something that we've been working on as an entire district, and I talked about this a little bit during my interview, is that the state of Minnesota gives you the answers to the test, the MCA tests. They're in the form of standards, and we need to align our curriculum to our standards. And you're going to start seeing your test scores go up because they're going to tell you what's going to be on that test. So we're working very diligently on that. I want to just thank Mrs. Vidito for what she's doing and the work that the curriculum committee is doing, the work that the teachers are doing to align those things and gather those out, because at the end, it's going to look really good. You're going to start seeing some terrific improvements. Now, that doesn't mean that what teachers have been doing is like wrong or bad or anything like that. It just means that this is what the state of Minnesota tests us on. Here's your MCA scores, and this is what we see. So that's what we're going to be working on over the course of the next, well, years it's going to be. On the management, leadership, and public relations, I talked to Jana Hollingsworth, and many of you know who Jana is. She's a reporter for the Minneapolis Star Tribune and is also a Proctor graduate. And she floated an idea that I talked to Tim Roweider about, but we'll need to spend a little bit more time talking about an idea that she has for being with us a little bit more than just once in a while, or gleaning information that she's getting off of websites, but actually being more embedded in our schools and with our teachers, to give us an, give her an idea of what I'm talking about when we talk about culture and climate. So we'll work with that. Jean Hammerstedt from WDIO is, works with me on our advertising. We will be sponsoring again the school closings. So every time you see a school closing, you're going to see Proctor Public Schools. It's that ad that we have. And then we're also going to work on new visual ads, too. They're going to be five-second and 10-second ads that they'll be able to run at certain times, but we need to work on the story for that. And then piggybacking off of that, just working with Ms. Case Strom today about, okay, there are opportunities for us to do that in a verbal sense, too. So all the radio stations. So we do have an advertising budget, and we'll continue to use that to tell those positive stories that will start to drawn out and eventually eliminate the negative ones. Working with our bargaining groups to better understand contract parameters has been really important to me, and we've really had a fantastic opportunity to meet with one of the, the AFSMI group was in. And it helps you to kind of really understand what it is that the contract language actually means. And so Steve and I have been working with them on that. That's been really good. You saw some pictures of the Alice drills. Alice drills are what they are. That we have to practice them. We're five times a year. This time, we evacuated buildings and went over to St. Rose and got ourselves back. It was just, it was a great, it was a beautiful day, all those kinds of things. But when you do it, you always know that there's a little bit of anxiety with all of our students, and especially with what went on the day before with the swatting that went on statewide. Our school was not subject to it, but Cloquet was. And if you talk to anybody from Cloquet, the level of concern, the fear, the anxiety in our kids, we're trying as hard as we can to make sure that we reduce that as much as we can, and especially with some of our students who experience that anxiety at a different level. So just so you know that as an entire staff, we're very well aware of that and work very hard to make sure that those kids are comfortable. And then the open door is just, again, the open door. I've been able to get out a lot and see what it is that we're actually doing. On the facilities and transportation, the boiler work up at Pike Lake, super cool, really cool. I'm not a pipe fitter, but they said you should be because you can make a heck of a living at it. And then the guy that was working there, Sam, said, "Hey, would you ever bring your Pathways kids to our training center so that they can see what this is like?" And there I am nodding, going again. Because the Pathways program is in place, you have this opportunity. Everybody you talk to, they say, "Hey, do you think your kids might like looking at something like this? The ironworkers over there by my house?" We have these opportunities, and these people are right next to us, so we will utilize them to our best of our abilities. And then the Uggstead Road Athletic Facilities, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Larry and his crew for coming out to try to find a water leak. We used compressed air and a lot of hope and faith and didn't find it yet, but that doesn't mean we're not going to. So we're going to isolate some areas, but we have a water leak out there. And the best way to describe it is that we turn the water on and it disappears. We're not exactly sure where it's going, but we shut the water off. Trust me, it's now like out there running right now, so we're just, we don't know where it's going. And then the high school forest shelter, I was out there again last week watching how they were, again, I thought it was going to be the teacher running the mini excavator, and here was the kids. They took a test, and the way I describe it is, you know, students, students are used to video games, okay? Me, not so much. But they use video games, and they don't think about what they're doing with their hands at all. They just simply watch what's happening, and they're doing these things completely disassociated. The same is with the mini excavator. And like I said, if you've never run one, you should. Go rent it. They'll let you rent it, and you can try it. Just give it a shot. But watching the kids, they're just sitting in there, they just do it. And it's like they were there for seconds. I was out there one time for four hours trying to dig a trench for an electrical line, and it's not natural. But for the kids, totally natural. And I'm just, again, thankful for Lowell and the group for teaching kids that this is what you can do. These are things that they're going to take forever. Larry's just kind of nodding politely. Yep. Your whole life. You can do it your whole life. And it's a good work.
I have a student that graduated last year that will dig circles around most of those.
There you are. Graduated last year. Yep. Because there's something within them that is just phenomenal. And then what my last comment on facilities, I didn't have this on your list tonight, but we, you know, we talk about school readiness. You talk about making sure that kids are ready for school. And one of the things I always say is, but are our schools ready for our kids? And so today, Steve and I met with an architectural firm just to talk and not to do anything, but they would love to come and see our high school and say, "Okay, you guys want to be a Pathways school and be a Destination school? We'd like to look at your spaces, and we might have some ideas on how you might be able to utilize your spaces differently or maybe enhance them." And so we're going to have them just come out. And again, it's just walking around, talking, because that's how ideas start, and that's how really cool things happen in the future. And then on the community involvement, yes, I was out there in the rain with a whole bunch of others, and it was the greatest day ever. Tanner and I tried to do a science experiment out there, even in a mud puddle, didn't work. But that's not your fault. That's completely on me. The playground for everybody is beautiful. If you haven't seen it recently, they're getting the concrete poured in, and it's just, it's going to be a phenomenal place. So again, thank you very much, Jen, and thanks for the opportunity to be out there working with the community. I was up at the Roundabout again today, and it doesn't pay to fuss at them. It doesn't. It doesn't. It doesn't do any good. Say, "Hey, where's the supervisor? He's over there, and he's busy. Leave him alone." It's not going to get any done faster by me going out there to say, "When is this going to get done?" But it's not done. Just wanted you to know. Okay. On the 29th, I get to do, along with Hermantown Superintendent Wayne Whitwam, and Kim is set up, and we're meeting here. We get to have our lunch here, and we're going to do a state of the schools, and I can't wait to talk about the state of our school district, to just absolutely thrill this audience with what it is that Proctor Public Schools does for kids and what we can do then for them. And I'm excited for that opportunity. So thank you again for that. And then lastly, I'll be at the pie picnic on the 30th. They have a Parents in Education, the Partners in Education over there at Bayview are going to have a picnic before the homecoming game. So I think that you're invited, if you'd love to come over there and, I don't know, swirl water and eat hot dogs, it'll just be a great day. So there's my report, and I, again, just want to thank you for this opportunity because it's just been exceptional. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay. We'll move on then to item 12B, social media report. It's in your electronic packet. Mine is slow to open right now. Any questions or any feedback otherwise?
No, what we're working on there is we're just making sure that we're getting our, our messages out to the right people at the right times. And that we can tie, there's, there's, again, a third party that's actually working on this. We do have the opportunity in Thrill Share with our website. Every time you add something and news on the website, it automatically will push it out to, in, in all of our social media platforms. But right now, we do have School4U, EDU, that is doing that for us. So we've talked about this a little bit before. We're trying to figure out a way so, really, we're, we're kind of being redundant here. And we need to figure out a way to utilize the, the product that we have, which is Thrill Share, which is Aptige. But right now, we do have a contract with that other company, so we'll continue to use them as well. And then as far as our Google Analytics telling us who's hitting our sites and when, Aptige is helping us out with them, with that.
Great, thank you. Moving on to Public Relations Updates, just highlighting some items relating to the district from the Proctor Journal. The September 15th edition, talking about our enrollment, holding steady, and mentioning multiple times throughout the weeks here regarding the Playground for Everybody, as well as in the September 22nd edition, highlighting Homecoming Week. And items relating to the district from Fox 21 News, the September 19th edition, featured the Playground for Everybody. Moving on to Reports, 13, School Board Committee Reports. In your packet, you'll see there is a Policy Committee Report. And I know that Amy sent out the Athletics Committee Report late last evening. Hopefully everyone got it. If you have any questions, certainly, we'll make sure that that gets added if you want to just throw it in with your minutes. If you have any questions, both from Amy and that meeting. And item 14, Communications, School Board Comments and Observations. Does anyone have any school board celebrations to talk about?
Although it's been mentioned a couple times, Madam Chair, I just have to say to you, you're amazing. That playground is awesome, the work you put in. I showed up late one day and saw Jennifer covered in mud because she dove right in. The work that you did is incredible, so thank you.
Thanks, Joe. It's a labor of love, that's for sure. I'm just, I'm just so excited for kids to be able to enjoy it. We're getting close. I guess I can just share the update then, since we're talking about it. We've got a couple things to tidy up this week. My benches were missing and they offered me the color blue. And I kind of looked at Bill and said, "I don't know if I can do blue." So I have green ones loaded on a flatbed somewhere on their way to Proctor for Wednesday. And so our benches are going to be here. And I talked with Tyler Bloom and the metals shop is going to be making plaques for the three families that have been identified right now to, that a bench will be named in their honor. One will be the Par Meter family in honor of Sandy. One will be Denny Lonkey, who helped with the initial playground back in 2012. And then one will be for Emma. I've yet to decide what I'll actually put on there. But, and then there's one bench that is yet to be named. So if anyone really wanted to honor someone in their life, certainly reach out to me and we can make an arrangement for that. And we've got to just tidy up a few things. And then I'm told that the surfacing will be coming soon. And I'll kind of keep that close to the chest for now because the playground can't be played on or walked on for like two days solid after that. So I know everyone's very anxious, but I've already had to ask some kids to quit riding their bikes through the area and their ATV through the area. So I'm just kind of a little bit leery about that. So I'm actually glad it's not going to be this Friday because of homecoming and the hammer game and, you know, it just probably wouldn't be the right weekend to have that. So I'm okay with that. But another cool thing is our playground guy, Bill Johnson, who has been with me this whole decade and he's put up with me this whole decade as we've tried to create this, he's actually flying home with our students from New York tonight. He's on that same flight. He said, "I'm sitting with a bunch of kids from Proctor." I'm like, "Well, good." I said, "They're a good bunch." So he sent me that before they took off. So, yeah, it's, I, I can't thank the school district enough for helping us with digging, I bet you, 200 holes. If you saw the bare ground and then all the holes we put in the first day and then the second day when the Par Meter family donated their time, we filled 115 holes with things and mud on that very muddy day. And Tom, you were there. It was, it was quite busy and many holes to fill. So, again, grateful for the community, for the collaboration with the school district and the city. It's been a long time coming, so thank you again.
Jen, you alluded to it, but how many years have you been working on this?
I don't know, Steve, when did we meet? 2009?
I think it's in excess of 10 years. This has been a goal of Jen's, so it's, you're a long hauler in this project.
I am, and I don't even know how this happened, you know, to be honest. I think my dad might have been talking to you. I don't know who, we were talking, I mean, amongst a group of people and Steve says, "Why don't you come meet with Jim Roweider?" I mean, that's how it all started. I still have the picture of Jim and I with Steve sitting across from us back from 2012 when we first put the initial part in. But we've been working on this since 2009 and, but the last decade for sure, since that first train went in.
Well, Emma was a pretty small child at that point.
She was. And there's, there's that oak tree, or the maple tree at the back and behind the swings, that's Emma's tree. She and Rick planted that the September after we put the first playground in. So, yeah, I have the little picture of her. She was, she was so tiny. It's a big shovel and he let her use the loader. It was great. So, yeah. Thank you. And thank you, Larry, for helping with, providing some material for us to be able to compact the surface and...
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's, it's a big thing. Abby was there to help that day in the rain assembling slides. And it'll be bound, we have to turn that one tube slide just a little bit more. Not the two tunnels, but the green slide, I think we have to turn it a little bit, but it'll be fine. So, good stuff. Thank you, guys. Does anyone else have any school board comments, celebrations, things to update? Happenings going on, places you've been? How's bus driving going? Good? Oh, boy. Good. That's great. Thank you for your dedication to helping our students get to school and home. I just wanted to piggyback on what Superintendent Juntinen was saying about the luncheon that's going to be here on Thursday. That's the Hermantown Area Chamber of Commerce's monthly luncheon. Your team, Steve, Woody, and you, Carrie, jumping in and helping us with the last minute venue change. I was trying to find neutral territory for Hermantown Superintendent and Proctor Superintendent. And because this is the home of the Mirage, we're excited to be here. And so I hope that there is a little bit of fun rivalry with the hammer game coming up the week after. So I don't know if we can, maybe somebody shaves their head or something with... So I'm very appreciative.
Why doesn't everybody look at the ball? Let's all pick on the bald guy. Paulically challenged, let's pick on that guy.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, Madam Chair, I hate to put you on the spot, Mr. Roweider, but for our viewing audience, could you update them on the events we have for Homecoming Week?
Let's let the students do that.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry. Never mind.
He's sweating. All right, we ready? You want, you want the update, Joe?
I want.
Okay, all right, sounds good. We'll move on then to Student Liaison Board Member Comments. Usually what I'll do, just to kind of tell you guys, I'll usually start from one end to go this way and this, you know, so that, I think you guys have decided that two of you will be at each meeting.
Yes.
And so I won't pick on the same person first. I'll try to go back and forth just to kind of give you some balance. So I think I heard that Britta and Abby are updating today.
Yes, we are. The first thing I'd like to talk about is, obviously, this week is Homecoming Week. I was able to talk to two Spike Club and Student Government students and how they decided to choose the dress-up days this week. One of the days, which is tomorrow, the Surfer versus Biker Day, was found on TikTok. And I'm very excited for it. A lot of students were very excited for it. They did a poll for Thursday's Dress-Up Day, which is neon. And, yeah, we have a swim meet coming up this Thursday. It's going to be Proctor Hermantown's last home meet against Two Harbors. Me and Abby are super excited for it. It's going to be senior night, parrot night. So overall, big, big night for the girls' swim team. We just recently, last Saturday, we won second place at Soderland Invitational at the Lincoln Park Pool. We were very excited. It was out of nine teams and we did very well. 38 best times, which is a lot. And then, and also, this coming week, the Malet is going to put out their first issue. And this year, they are also going to get sweatshirts. So we'll be able to identify which students are in the Malet. And then also coming up, the UWS Honor Band participants are going to be named soon. I think October 19th is when it comes out. So very excited for that. And anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, well, I mean, I know all the students are really excited for Homecoming. It gives kind of a new energy, so that's fun. And just even seeing how many people participated in Pajama Day today, it was really cool to see. I didn't know that that many people were interested in it, I guess. So then, on Friday, we have the hammer game and the homecoming dance, and that'll be fun, too. It's just, gives people something to look forward to at the end of their week. And Edo was just telling me that they have a soccer game on Thursday, right? Yeah, so that'll be fun. And we also had our first National Honor Society meeting. That was on last Monday. And it was really cool just to see how the students are doing well and getting good grades and that they're rewarded for it and people are recognizing that and all the hard work and dedication that goes into that. So, yeah, I think that's about it. School's just been going really well and it's nice to see everybody participating.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions or comments to our new student members?
Actually, I do. You mentioned the National Honor Society. You're doing a warm clothing drive right now. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we just started talking about organizing it.
I like that you're doing it ahead of time, ahead of when it's cold because it seems like everyone's scrambling around Christmas time. It seems like it's better balanced to prepare people to be ready for the winter than to be struggling and then have to find things.
Jen, it's cold.
I, you haven't heard about my new, anyways. You'll, you'll survive. You will. Put a hat on your head. All right, anything else tonight? Glad you're here. Thank you so much. This is an important part of, of this learning process for you all. And I'm, I'm glad that we have a program like this that involves our students, so thank you. I'm glad that there's going to be four of you, you know, and it's, that's always been our goal is to have two juniors and two seniors that can kind of mentor each other and, and so that we have enough coverage, really. Because you're missed when you're not here. And it's not to, you know, things happen and there are activities you have to be at and athletic events and other academic things that come up in the evenings, too. But you are missed when, when you're not here and when we haven't had anyone, you know, just due to not having any applicants. So thank you for your dedication and please reach out and ask if you have any questions. I'll make sure you have my contact information if you have questions regarding the agenda or even after the meeting, if there's things that you just need clarification on.
And they're going to be, have them, have their names up by the office or something, too, so they'll recognize them, just students? Okay, so that's being done. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Anything else? All right. Township and City Communications, anything going on out in the greater community other than the roundabout that's not done?
Well, that's pretty much the talk of the town.
Okay, sounds good. All right, item number 15, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved by Amy.
There's a motion by Amy. Is there a second?